Good evening, everyone. It's 7:05. Welcome to the...
Six.
Six.
Six oh... I forgot the routine.
We fell back.
I fell back. An hour extra. Welcome to Shenandoah City Council meeting for November 13, 2024. I look around, I see that we do have a quorum. And so we're going to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by... First of all, before we do that, let me recognize our elected officials who are visiting here with us tonight. Judge Keough, Montgomery County Judge. Thank you for being here, sir. His Assistant Chief of Staff, Justin Smith.
Jason.
Jason Smith, I'm sorry. Jason Smith. Thank you for being here. Dr. Shelley Sekula Gibbs from the township is here also. And Steve Briggs, Briggs from Mud, is it 66?
67.
67. Thank you for being here, folks. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
The invocation is going to be delivered tonight by Judge Keough. Thank you, Mayor. It's a singular honor to be able to be here and deliver this invocation to this board and to the people of Shenandoah. So if you would bow your heads with me, let's pray. Father, you teach us that you are the God who made the world and everything in it, that you are Lord of heaven and earth. And Father, you teach us that when we walk with you and we follow your ways, that we can approach you and talk to you. And Father, it is, as I observe all that goes on in our county and the things that we're trying to do and the things that are taking place, Lord, that we do abide in you as a group of people. We're not perfect, but Father, we are a good and virtuous people and appeal to you that you would continue to answer our prayers. Because you teach us that if you abide in me and my words abide in you, ask whatever you will and it will be given you. This is to my Father's glory that you bear much for him. And so, Lord, we know that you want us to be successful. We know that you want this council to be successful. You know that the tasks that they're committed to, that you want to bless and honor. And Father, I just pray today in this meeting that you would give uncommon wisdom to these leaders and in these discussions. That whatever is discussed would be discussed in an open and transparent way that we know would be honoring to you. You tell us to be the salt of the earth. And what good is the salt if it loses its saltiness? It's thrown on the ground and trampled by men. So Father, we do that by pursuing virtue, by pursuing goodness as a board, as a people, as a community, as this city of Shenandoah. Bless this time now, Lord. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, we're going to move on to Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters related to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their name before sharing their comments. As a reminder, we can engage in a conversation about the comments that you're about to make, but as we cannot deliberate on those items as they are not on the agenda. All right, first up, Stephen Briggs.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Steve Briggs, a 22-year resident of the Woodlands Township. I'm here to share information with you regarding a plan to widen Grogan's Mill Road from four to six lanes between Woodlands Parkway and Research Forest Drive. I believe you have a handout that's been passed, and the one that has the map on it, this is item six on that map, on that piece of paper. According to a recent article in Community Impact, the road project was first proposed to Houston Galveston Area Council and their 2035 Regional Transportation Plan in 2007. In 2015, Montgomery County Precinct 3 identified the project as a future need based on a South Montgomery County Mobility Study. In April last year, HGAC's 2045 Regional Transportation Study Plan included the Grogan's Mill widening project with an estimated fiscal year of 2025. This is now proposed to move to 2027. Back in January 2016, HGAC presented its thoroughfare plan to the Montgomery County Commissioners Court, which at the time included proposed changes to a number of county roadways. In February 2016, the Woodlands Township Board passed a resolution objecting to several roadway projects in the transportation plan, one of which was a Grogan's Mill extension north to State Highway 242. But the board stated in writing at that time that they did not object to the widening of Grogan's Mill from Woodlands Parkway to Research Forest. So more recently, HGAC's Transportation Improvement Plan for 2025 to 2028, released in April of this year, includes this Grogan's Mill widening project. Dr. Snyder and Dr. Sekula Gibbs from the Woodlands Board became aware of the project in July, on July 24th, and the project was put on the agenda for discussion at the April Board Meeting. Beginning at that meeting in August, residents began voicing concerns about the road project. I and others spoke in opposition to the project at the October 21 Boardship Meeting, and we supported a resolution proposed by Dr. Sekula Gibbs at the meeting, which to oppose the road widening. Unfortunately, the Township Board voted six to one to take no action on the resolution pending further study. For many Township residents, the decision about the project to widen Grogan's Mill is clear: we are opposed. Within the Woodlands, the project may invite increased and unwanted cut-through traffic through the Market Street area of town with resulting traffic congestion. Also, the wider road is of particular concern to residents who live in residential areas along the road. To raise awareness, we now have a petition circulating with about 300 signatures on it. And also, I might add, I know I've over time, but this proposed future widening of Grogan's Mill would likely impact the city of Shenandoah as well, no doubt adding traffic at the intersection of Grogan's Mill and Research Forest, and probably to the city of Shenandoah itself. As such, I might suggest that the city of Shenandoah might consider adopting a resolution opposing this project as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Dr. Shelley Sekula Gibbs.
Good evening, Mayor Iscado, and distinguished members of the Shenandoah City Council. It's an honor to be with you, as well as with residents and citizens of Shenandoah, and some of my fellow residents of the Woodlands. I am a board-certified dermatologist. I'm in private practice, well, actually, not in private practice anymore, I'm in group practice in Houston, and I serve on the Woodlands Township Board. I have been on the Houston City Council, like you, and I've also served in the U.S. Congress briefly. But tonight, I'm speaking to you as a resident, only a resident. So you've heard from Mr. Steve Briggs, and he laid out the history of this project that's planned by HGAC and TechDOT. When it came to my attention in July, I have to say I was flabbergasted to see it, because I, like many of you, am very opposed to any project that would bring more cut-through traffic through our community. It's just against the tenants of what we do to represent residents. We want to protect our residents from being like 1960. So I'm here tonight to ask you to do what our board failed to do, which is pass a resolution in a future, discuss and decide if this is in your best interest, but pass a resolution that could be taken to TechDOT, taken to HGAC, taken to the county, and I know the judge is here, so maybe he's listening, that would express opposition to widening Grogan's Mill from the Woodlands Parkway to Research Forest from four to six lanes. This is not in the best interest of our residents, I do believe. So besides considering that, I want to invite all the residents in the city of Shenandoah to sign a petition that is now on change.org, which Mr. Briggs mentioned, has over, almost 300 signatures already on it, and that can also be used as leverage so that we might be able to bring this back to the Township Board in the near future, and they might consider again, with more information that might be available to them, that, and we could take a position against this widening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be with you tonight, and I wish you all God's speed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sekula. All right, next up is Chelsea Baird.
Hi there.
Hello.
Hey, my name is Chelsea. I live at 707 Rosewood. And I was just coming up tonight just to kind of speak about the speeding in the neighborhood. I am a mom and a resident, and my little guys are residents too, and they love playing outside. They love being out there, and I am nervous. I cannot leave them out there. Even with me sitting on the porch, I'm scared every time that they're outside. Because just from sitting on my porch, I can see the speeding, I can see the running of the stop signs, and those little guys are constantly in that intersection. And I'm just up here asking if we can please do something about it. It's, I don't want it to get to the point where somebody gets hurt or run over before something happens about this. Since we don't have the sidewalks in the neighborhood, I really think that the speeding should be strictly, strictly enforced. It's such a hazard to people, especially with them out walking. The weather's getting better. Everybody already knows there's constantly dogs out in the streets, like it's, there's cars parked everywhere. It's just such a hazard, and I really, just as a resident and standing up for my little guys, I'm just asking if we could please, please do something about it. Strictly enforce that speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Very much, Chelsea. Next up is Josh Parks.
Good evening, council, residents, township, judge. Good to have everyone here tonight. Oh, sorry. My name is Josh. I live in Rosewood. But also, I'm here about the speeding as well, for my little guys. Actually, I have a license plate number for you guys. But we have quite a few cars that just blasted the stop sign. Me and Chelsea play a game, will they stop? There's lots of kids on our section of the street. I'd say about 10 to 15 kids from kindergarten to fourth, fifth grade, they're all out there playing. There's a one individual that's really grinding my gears that get with the chief about it. But we got people that just like, either they're leaving the stop sign, like they're leaving the tree at the drag strip, or they're just not stopping at all. It's not safe. I know we saw the incident on Facebook. I didn't realize there was going to be this many people here tonight, so I don't want to like drag through it. We have a great police department, in case anyone is wondering. We do have great police. But I think with all the expansion of the growth in Shenandoah, 242 is growing, all the traffic, you know, you see people in the neighborhood driving, they're obviously lost, they're backing up, driving, just driving crazy. But anyways, I'm just here, can like, we really get this under control? I think, I'm cool with like passing on registration stickers or whatever, you know, like let it slide, but as far as speeding and running the stop sign, I think especially residents, we should throw the book at them. They know better. And that's, that's really the main problem, is the residents that are speeding, and I think we should throw the book at them. I think it's time. So thank you all, you all have a blessed night, and good luck with y'all's new pick.
Thank you, Josh. Next is John Samuelson.
I pass, thank you.
The next speaker is Betty Anderson. Betty?
Thank you.
All right, hi. My name is Betty Anderson. I've been a resident here since 1991, and 503 Rosewood Drive. I'm the Republican Precinct 31 Chairman here. Thank you for your hospitality and allowing us to use the city complex here to hold elections throughout many years. But I need to notify you that Precinct 31 presently has a sign ordinance here in Shenandoah which does not comply with the Texas Election Code, in my opinion, and I'm an elected official. Judge Vince Santini, who is one of our district judges here, has provided information from the Texas Election Code, which allows political campaigns to electioneer with multiple signs at all Texas election sites on Election Day. So I emailed all of you an attachment before the last election with the information that you have in your hands right now. And so I'm appealing to our city council members to review and address this before the next election, which probably, there might be another nonpartisan election in May. I've been duly elected, the Precinct 31 Chair, and we, our boundaries actually encompass not only Shenandoah, but South Conroe and the east side of the Woodlands and Alden Bridge. So Shenandoah doesn't even make up half of our precinct. But nevertheless, we've appreciated your hospitality. There are many constituents who do not live in Shenandoah, and they don't know for sure. I mean, I've talked to some of the constituents who don't actually know where Shenandoah City Hall is. And so it is helpful to have enough signs here to make the election site look like an election site. And some of the city council members have said they don't want the city hall to look like South County early voting location. Well, I don't either, and it won't, because the early voting location has signs from candidates from the entire county. So South County has signs of candidates from Willis, from New Caney, from Magnolia. But on Election Day, we only have, why would a candidate want to put a sign at our election site if they're not on our ballot? Okay, so...
Finish, finish your thought.
Okay, my, my statement is that I would really like for you to review our election code, which the election code allows for only one political sign on our city polling location on Election Day. And I would like for you to review that. I'm not asking for before 7:00 a.m. or after 7:00 a.m., just during the time of the election, for the place to look like an election site. And I don't want to have to go to College Park High School, which is within our boundaries. I'd rather do it here, it would be more convenient for our Shenandoah residents. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your hard work.
How many signs are you proposing?
What?
How many signs do you propose? We'll have to say.
Okay. I'll talk to you afterwards.
You can discuss on the phone.
I'd be happy to meet with you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Betty. All right, we're going to move on to item number six, Presentation of a Monthly Capital Project Report.
Okay, October, we had no meeting scheduled, and just to refresh everybody, in September, MDD approved funding for additional $20,000 for the Vision Park Roundabout, which is under construction right now. Other current year projects, the design for the Tamina Regional Drainage, the design is 100% complete, and not our project, but Charlie Riley's is the eastbound Research Forest to northbound Grogan's Mill merge lane, so that is under construction and expected to be completed this year. Longer-term projects, the Wellman Road drainage improvements, this is really something that's waiting on approval of drainage easements from Encompass Hospital and construction easements as well. Just mentioned, the Vision Park Roundabout is under construction, although that bulrock has been removed, and they've stabilized the foundation. Tamina intersections, intersection improvements, we're still in communication with the telecom regarding new poles and wires. Monument sign is really on hold, it's a low priority for TechDOT. We did dedicate the Veterans Memorial this past Monday, we had a great turnout there. It's a very intimate venue, all the items have been completed, and really proud of the staff for getting everything done on time for this project. Intersection 45 improvements, TechDOT is going to be bidding this out and manage construction. There was a scoping meeting in September 25th, the target date has not been established Water and sewer projects, the wastewater treatment plant, we completed polishing and grouting the digester walls and pour generator blower pads plus partial motor control center pad. No other changes from the last month. And for our PID ARPA projects, the update is, we are, we've already done the awards and executing the contracts. Secara is working on it fencing, the water well subcontractor Weisinger will begin installing their well casing this week. Ground storage take mobilization is going to take place next month, and Phoenix Fabricators and Erectors is currently working on submittals for the elevated storage tank. All the other PID projects are currently on hold per waiting on Sam Moon. Any questions, guys? All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item number seven, Discussion on Possible Action to Appoint a Member to City Council to Fill an Unexpired Term of Position Two. At this time, I want to nominate Joe Summerlin to fill the unexpired term for position number two. Can I get a motion?
Can I make a motion that will move that we approve Joe Summerlin for Council Position Two?
Second.
We have a motion to approve Joe Summerlin to fill the unexpired term for Position Two by Councilman Pollard, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion?
He'll be a fine addition.
I think that's a good choice, Mr. Mayor.
I've seen him at numerous activities that we have. We have so many things going on in Shenandoah, and Joe and his family, his entire family, he's got an expanded family in this community, and they've been here for decades, solid citizens. They support everything that's good in the city, they are at all the events. I move that he is one of the best people I could possibly think of to fill a position here.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Joe. Staff will reach out to you to brief you on what the next steps are and give you the date for the next council meeting. All right, we're going to move to item number eight, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Following. A, Tamina Utilities Project Bids. B, Tamina Lift Station Project Bids. And C, Tamina Plumbing Project Bid.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think we have good news for you all tonight. I'll take these in the order that they're listed on the agenda. You have in your council packets all the information, so if you have any questions when I finish, just ask, and I'll try to answer those. Just a reminder, you've already awarded three contracts for the Tamina Project. The first one was the clearing and grubbing of the water plant site, that work has been completed. Contractor is working, the water plant contractors, Councilman Raymaker said earlier. Drilling the well, ground storage and booster pumps will follow. And then the third contract that you've already awarded is the elevated storage, which is the water tower, which you also mentioned. So those are well underway. So the Tamina Utilities Project Bids, we bid these, three contracts, or three bid documents, to do three contracts. This was, these were bid on November 6th. We had very competitive bids, we're recommending award of all three to the low bidder, it happened to be the same contractor, which was, that really worked out well. And so the east side was divided into north and south, and then the west side was one project bid, all on the west side. Because of some activity, construction activity that's happened on the west side since we put the contract documents together, we're going to recommend tonight that you defer awarding to that, that contract, to that contractor until we have a chance to make sure that we don't need to change any scope of work because of some construction that's going on. We need about two weeks, so we'll come back to you in your December meeting and then ask for you to approve that contract. So any questions? I didn't know if you want to take these one at a time here, or all three together, or how you want to do that.
However you prepare.
So I would recommend that you award the east side work, the two contracts, to the low bidder, and defer the west contract until the December 11th council meeting.
I move that we accept your proposal.
I second. But I think we should take these individually.
Yeah, okay.
Then rather than, rather than...
Well, let's take, let's take Alpha first, Tamina Utilities Project Bids. You have a motion, right?
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Brock.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Robinson. Discussion.
So just to be clear on this motion, are you approving the two that we're recommending, the two contracts?
Well, as they're listed here, Alpha, Bravo, Charlie. So which is the one that yours, you're suggesting?
Alpha has three contracts.
Oh, I see, within it.
Yes, within it.
Okay.
So if you want to do them one at a time, is Councilman Brock, is that what you were suggesting?
That's what I was suggesting.
Okay, so let's take the east side, north, northeast side first. We recommend award to the low bidder for that contract.
Okay, all right. So do we agree we're going to vote on that?
In the description, if there is, yes, no, because in the description, there isn't a north, just, just the one east, water and sewer lines. So I guess, John, you have to help us along with what...
Yeah, what it is.
So I've got the name here in front of me. So what we're, what staff is recommending is approving the Tamina Northeast Water and Sewer Utilities to ISJ Underground.
So what is the dollar amount for that one?
The dollar amount is $1,341,750.
Okay, that's the middle in there, okay. And that's what's on the table right now, Joseph?
Right. That's, that's the first of the seven projects we're going to be looking at tonight.
That's your, that's your first motion.
Okay, so that's the first, that's the first.
Right, so if we're going to take these, a project at a time, then we'd need a motion at this point.
So I'll amend my first motion to what Joseph just said.
Okay, so that's the first contract.
To that item.
Yeah, and I'll second that item.
So we'll remain that way, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that portion... Okay, that portion of the motion passes, okay? The next one.
So the next one is the southeast Water and Sewer Project, and that's to the same contractor, ISJ Underground Utilities, in the amount of $1,340, sorry, $3,821,750.
I like the $1 million better.
Me too.
Do we have a motion for that one, for that item?
I'll move that item as presented.
The second.
We have a motion to approve the item as presented by Councilman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The third one, for Water and Sewer Utilities only, is one contract on the west side, same contractor, same low bidder, and the amount was $2,127,620. We're recommending deferring this until your December 11th council meeting.
All right. We're going to refer this to a vote for the next council meeting. Next item.
You need to vote on that?
No. No, we're just going to defer.
Okay, so then we're moving to item B on the agenda then, and these are the Tamina Lift Station projects, the bids. We have three projects.
Wait, I can't scroll that fast.
The first project that we're recommending approval or award of the contract is the Johnson Road Lift Station. The low bidder was PMG Project Management, and the amount was $1,095,707. We're recommending approving award of that contract.
You have a motion for approval.
I move that we approve it.
You have a motion to approve by Councilman Pollard, you'll have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brock. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, that portion carries.
Thank you. The second one we're recommending is the Broadway and Sweet Rest Lift Station. The low bidder was also PMG Project Management. The amount of that bid was $1,395,995, and we're recommending awarding to that low bidder.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Ezra by Councilman Pollard, seconded by Councilman Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the last one is the Main Street Lift Station. This is near the water plant, the low bidder was Cicada Civil Construction. He happens to be the water plant contractor as well. And that total bid was $907,578. We're recommending award to Cicada.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Brock, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item C on your agenda is the Tamina Plumbing Project Bid. We had to bid the plumbing because these contracts have to be awarded before the end of the year. This will be the last thing done on the project. We included a requirement in the bid form that the contractors are required to hold their bid numbers until November of 2026, so the bid can't change. The low bidder was Bulge Construction, they have done work for you before. All of these bidders we vetted, we're recommending award to Bulge Construction for the plumbing work that will be done in about a year. And the total amount was $1,132,860.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Brock.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yes, one other thing, our construction estimate for all of these bids was $12.8 million. The bids came in at 11.8 roughly, so we're a little bit, about $1 million below our estimate, which is great news, so we had really competitive bids.
Woo-hoo.
Any questions? Any? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, we're going to move on to item number nine. Discussion and possible action to approve an amendment to the Memorial Hermann Hospital, the Woodlands Sign Ordinance.
Mayor and Council, the hospital campus has a sign ordinance specific to its construction. At this time, the new medical office building located along I-45 is needing signage, and they've requested this amendment. Includes two wall signs, a monument sign, signage on the porticochay at the front door, and then also reserved parking signs along the south elevation of the building. It should be noted that this sign package is in line with the rest of the campus.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion?
I move a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Ezra, seconded by Councilman, uh, by Councilman Pollard, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? Any one of these signs include the City of Shenandoah logo?
There is no logo proposed for this building.
It's on the parking garage.
It is on the parking garage.
It's not big enough, though. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10. Discussion and possible action to approve leased vehicles for the police department.
Motion to table.
We have a motion to table.
Second.
By Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Brock. That item is table. Item 11. Discussion and possible action to approve an increase of coverage limits.
Mayor and Council, as a senior agenda pack, this is a request to increase our general liability and auto liability insurance coverages with Texas Municipal League Interpol Risk Insurance, and also to add an additional railroad protective liability insurance. There is work with the Tamina Utilities Project that crosses railroad lines, and when dealing with Union Pacific, they require a certain limit for insurance, as well as an additional railroad protective liability insurance. So as you'll see in there, the cost estimate for our TML IRP insurance is about $1,500. That will just be for this year, next year we'll go back down to our regular limits. And then the railroad protective liability insurance is estimated to be about $3,500 for that policy, which is just a one-time cost, and then will be foregone after the project is completed. Because this is insurance coverages, it is required by council to be approved.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Brock, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, item number 12. Discussion and possible action to approve the creation of a new bank account and new financial fund for Tamina Utility Deposits.
Mayor and Council, with the Tamina Project, there are terms that we will take over deposit balances and continue billing the old, I mean, the Tamina water customers once the CCDN is transferred over to us. So in order to meet accounting rules, we will act as a fiduciary basically on those funds until they, our service starts. The city has elected to continue with A1 Utilities, which is the utility provider over there. They know their system, they know all the meters, and they know all the customers, so they will continue to collect and bill on behalf of the city, and then pay Chateau Woods for the wholesale water. So in order to keep everything transparent and act as a fiduciary, we are recommending creating a new bank account that will be just for those funds, that will be a dual custodianship between A1 and the city to make sure everything is going smoothly. And then for the new financial fund, to separate those out as a fiduciary fund. Once our system goes live and we start to bill with our water, those will disappear. Everything will migrate into our water sewer fund and our pool cash account. But just for right now, to maintain transparency, and also more accounting rules and laws, we just have to do this right now.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve as discussed by Councilman Raymaker.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Brock. Any discussion? Do we have a full accounting of the people who are, who have accounts?
Yes.
Who are drawing water from?
Yes, A1 has all that. Amanda Tram is over that company with the billing, and she's been wonderful to provide all the information to us.
And are those, do we have any idea if those accounts are up to date? I mean, they are, any delinquency or anything like that?
So they have a different type of, they have a membership base and not a deposit base because of, I guess, how their water company is set up. So we are working through that right now to make sure everything is copacetic with the turnover to the city.
Okay. Any additional questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13. Planning and zoning presentations. Jackie?
Yes, Mayor and Council, for consideration for you this evening, we've got a variance request by property owner at Seven North Park Gate for a generator and its equipment located in the side yard. This variance request is due to the location of the gas and electrical services to the home. Planning and zoning commission review this application and recommend its approval. The second application for you for consideration tonight is a wine and malt beverage permit with late hours for Breakthrough, which is located in the Metro Park Development. They intend to have the beer and wine sales with the wine and malt beverage with the late hours between midnight and 2:00 a.m. They indicated they primarily use this for lock-in events, not full-time service, but planning and zoning did recommend approve that application as well. And last for consideration is Katz Express located over in the Portofino Shopping Center. They currently hold a wine and malt beverage, they're requesting a mixed beverage with late hours permit. Planning and zoning also did recommend that approval as well.
All right. Item 14, we're going to hold public hearings on all three of those items. First, we're going to take the first one. A variance to the city, the city Shenandoah ordinance allowing for encroachment of a generator and equipment within the side building setback located at Seven North Park Gate, Shenandoah, Texas. Is there anyone here to speak on that item? No one is here to speak on that item. Item number two, second item. A special use permit for wine and malt beverage retail permit on premise with late hours for BRKT, BRK, what is it, through Metro Park Square, located at 888-5 Metro Park Drive, Shenandoah, Texas. Is there anyone here to comment on that item?
And Mayor, if you would, unless I missed it, I'm not sure you said that you started at 6:47, the public hearings.
Oh, yeah, 6:47, yes.
That we opened, okay.
Having no one here to speak on that item, we're going to move on to the next one. Special use permit for mixed beverage retail permit on premise with late hours for Katz, Katz's Express, number one LP located at 19075 Highway 45 South Suite 116A, Shenandoah, Texas. Is there anyone here to speak on that item? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Can you approach the?
I'm happy to speak, I don't have anything, I haven't answered questions on it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. We're going to close the open public hearing, we're going to close the public hearing at 7:50.
Six.
6:50.
Six, yeah.
My clock, I didn't change my clock. All right. On item, let me see, on item one. An ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances Chapter 102 to approve a variance to the city of Shenandoah zoning ordinance, providing for encroachment of a generator and equipment into a side building setback line for Seven North Park Eight Circle, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of $2,000 for violations thereof, providing severability and providing for an effective date. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On the second item, an ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances Chapter 102 granting a special use permit for a wine and malt beverage onsite permit with late hours for Breakthrough Metro Park Square LLC located at 885 Metro Park Drive, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of $2,000 for violations thereof, providing severability and providing for an effective date. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, Councilman Raymaker, second.
Second.
Councilman Brock, seconded. Any discussion?
Jackie, can you tell us a little bit about Breakthrough?
Absolutely, it's one of our new entertainment venues going in. They took the vacant building that would be to the east of the green space, they took that entire square footage there.
Awesome.
They are, it's a gaming experience where you have a series of rooms that you have to enter through by problem-solving, puzzle-solving game, game strategies and stuff.
Any additional comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances Chapter 102 granting a special use permit for a mixed beverage onsite permit with late hours for Katz's Express, number one LP located at 19075 Interstate 45 South Suite 116A, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of $2,000 for violations thereof, providing severability and providing for an effective date. Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by, second, Councilman Robinson. Any discussion?
Katz has always been a great business for us, and we've never had any issues with them before, so wholeheartedly approve.
Plus, they're open 24 hours.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 18. Discussion and possible action to ratify the accounts payable for October 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Pollard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Civic Club Updates.
I do not see Charlie here tonight.
City Administrator Updates.
Council, I have a few updates for you. I'm going to add to what Councilman Raymaker said about our Veterans Point Dedication Event on Monday. It was a huge success. We had a wonderful turnout. It was just perfect. I want to thank all the employees who helped make this event happen, public works, police. I want to recognize a couple in particular, first of all, Kirby Krenwalgie, who handles our communications. She coordinated a lot of the details and just kept the event moving forward, even though we had some last-minute things that we were waiting to find out about. Also, Officer Patrick Reed, above and beyond his normal responsibilities, helped coordinate this event as well. He helped arrange for the Blackhawk helicopter that landed and some other details. So really, really a wonderful event. People are still talking about how great it was, so I'm very, very pleased with that. The next item is the Vision Park Roundabout. That should be nearing completion by the end of this week. You all have probably seen that work going on, so that'll be, it'll be nice to have that project done. that'll be, it'll be nice to have that project done. A couple of items, city events, the trash bash that happened, I guess it was on the twenty-sixth, we had a record number of visitors. We had two-hundred-and-eleven visitors.
Wow.
So, it was a huge success. And also, that same day was the Fall Into Fun event. It was that evening. Wonderful turnout, great weather. Everyone had a great time. So, that was also a great success. And that event is in its second year. So, it's nice to see that taking off. I want to recognize our city secretary, Courtney Clary. She just completed her exams to finish her certification. It's the municipal clerk's certification. And correct me if I get anything wrong, Courtney.
That's correct.
This certification, it takes a long time. There's a lot of study, a lot of preparation. And some of these titles are a little old-fashioned. They've been around for a long time. So, city secretary can be a little misleading. Some people think that's a clerical job or an admin assistant. But it's actually a much higher ranking position. It's a statutory position. It is a requirement that a city have a city secretary. It's a tremendous amount of work and knowledge. And the city secretary is on the same level as our directors. Secondly, our city secretary also handles our internal H R functions. So, Courtney does a lot of work here. And I know that in preparing for this certification that she's been working on for a few years, when she sets her mind to something, she's very, very determined. So, that's a lot to be proud of. So, congratulations. And the last item, I am going to ask Chief Dunlap to give us an update on the dogs that we had residents speak about recently, and also on the traffic enforcement in the neighborhoods.
So, with the dogs, I contacted Animal Control, and they felt that we'd already handled the situation. We issued a citation. So, they closed the case, and they're not going to do anything further. I have been in contact with Mr. Samuelson. He's been emailing me back and forth. And I made a few suggestions to him, as well as he's been updating me, sending me photographs, that they've taken corrective action to no longer make, ensure that the dogs are contained. With that, I also talked to one of the neighbors, and they stated that since we arrived and issued the citation, that the dogs have not gotten out since then. So, I would consider that a resolved situation at this time. As far as the traffic enforcement, I've been telling you all along that we've had more stops in the residential area than we've had in the history of Shenandoah. And we continue to keep doing that every year. So, the guys are stopping people in there. But one thing that I did look at was, I did some data search and found out that there was a small portion of that that were actually citations. They were giving residents a lot of breaks. So, I said, let's fix that. So, moving forward, they're going to enforce that with citations. So, there'll still be the traffic enforcement, but less warnings.
Chief, I just want to make sure that there are some voices in the community, especially on social media.
Right.
Who are erroneously claiming that the city is not addressing these problems.
Right.
I just want to make sure that the public knows that the city is addressing them. We are effectively dealing with the issues as they pop up. The one issue that triggers me a little is the fact that they'll see a violation and they'll immediately put it on social media. There's no effective way to handle anything like that through social media, as far as the city is concerned, as far as the police department is concerned, or any type of enforcement. I have gone on social media myself, at the risk of my own safety, as it were, on social media, to deal with this. Let them know, the first number you should call is the police department. And then, if you wish to share your views on social media, we'll do so. Because we don't monitor the social media. The city doesn't do that. The P D doesn't do that. So, I urge everyone, if they see something reported, we are dealing with these issues. We are effectively enforcing the traffic laws, whether it's a warning. We are dealing with it. We are aware of it. We're not abandoning the public safety of our residents in any way.
No, none whatsoever. And like I said, we've been continuing, continuously picking up our amount of traffic stops that we've made in the residential areas. But going forward, there's going to be a lot less leniency with it. But I've had numerous people come up to me, and that's to your point, that so many people say stuff on Facebook, and they don't come to us. But what I hear is, they see us all the time. They see us making the traffic stops. I've been getting a lot of accolades about the amount of traffic stops we've been making in the residence. So, you know, folks out there, please don't put stuff on Facebook. Come to us. We don't know if there's an issue, if it's just on Facebook. We can't. Calling us and telling us, or running into us and saying, hey, three days ago, I had this situation. Well, that doesn't, that doesn't help us right now. If you would have told us, called us then, we could have solved the problem. But, yes, I encourage people, quit using Facebook to, as a platform, to try to get out there and say stuff. We don't monitor that.
And that's all I have.
Anyone else have anything to add? All right, we'll move on to council inquiry. Councilman Raymaker?
Well, I wanted to thank Ted for all his time on service, his help and his assistance over the years that we've been together on council. Been through a lot together and made a lot of good things happen. We've accomplished a lot, and a lot to be proud of. The free trash and the sex offender ordinance quickly come to mind. Certainly going to miss the camaraderie we've shared over the years, but also his keen business insights that he brought with him. They've just been invaluable over the years that we've had. I'm sure we've not seen the last of him, but I'm certainly going to miss having him sitting next to me. Lastly, I wanted to thank staff for their professionalism regarding project management. Just this week, we dedicated the Veterans Point, just another example of the on-time, on-budget leadership that we expect, and not like some other cities that get surprises all the time. It was an aggressive schedule for sure, but you took it all in stride and made it happen. So, I just wanted you to know how proud we are of you and what you've been able to do for us. You just continue to make us look good. So, I just wanted to say thank you. Ted?
I second what you say about Ted. I've only been working with him for three years on the council, and four years on P M Z. And he's very professional. I'm going to miss his business insight, his understanding especially of real estate values. And when we're looking at purchasing and selling properties, he knows it inside out. Will really miss him enough. I'm really glad that he's still going to stay involved with the city on M D D. And speaking of M D D, I wanted to also thank M D D. They were not, we didn't really point out what a contributor they were to the Veterans Point. Everybody else was recognized, did our thing. And one of the M D D members came up to me afterwards, and you told everybody, but we're the ones that gave you a lot of the money to do this. So, what about me? So, anyway, it's a pat on the back to Jim Wallace and the rest of the people on M D D for financing that project. It's one of the best projects, I think, that we've ever had, next to Tama, since I've been here. And I wanted to also say something about the dogs. And I'd like to say something about the traffic. I've talked a lot to people in the community about both of those things. And I really commend for the police department for jumping in and writing citations, and working with the owners of that dog, of those two dogs, and getting it resolved. That was a major, major issue. We had a lot of people that were running scared in the neighborhood. I've talked to people and said, I can't even go out and walk around anymore. It's been going on for quite a while. So, thank you very much for that. As far as, I wanted to also say my personal experience. I drive a lot around, I drive around a lot in the core of Shenandoah, looking at things. And I have been seeing, because I knew that the mayor put a directive out, the city administrator put a directive out, and the police chief put a directive out, pretty stern, a couple of weeks ago, about no more free rides. The people are not going to get off whenever they run these stop signs, and they speak, and then they speed. And I know that we've been very stern with our officers about that. And I've watched them. A week ago, Friday, at the corner of Research in Holly Hills, there were three cars pulled over getting citations. I was very happy. Last week, we were driving through, and on Rosewood, I saw a police officer, after I almost ran this, I didn't roll it, I didn't. But I came up to the stop sign, and I stopped, and I took off. And as I took off, I looked down there, and there's a police officer parked there watching. And I looked at my wife. I said, oh, my God. I said, did I roll that? And she said, no, you didn't. I said, all right. So, I pulled around and talked, pulled up to the police officer, and asked him to roll his window down. And I thanked him. I said, a lot of people are complaining, saying you're not on top of it. And I'm glad that you're watching it. And if I'd have run it, I would have wanted a ticket, and I deserved it. So, thank you, guys. You're really doing a good job. I know you're all over it. People, you can't be everywhere. But people are learning. I think when the word gets out that you're writing those citations, you'll see a lot of the speeders stop. Anyway, thank you very much, chief. You're like incredible. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Bratt?
I want to wish Ted Fletcher good luck on all his endeavors, future endeavors. I'm going to miss our spirited conversations we had up here, and probably the best. But he's a good man. He's brought a lot to the table, a lot of insight that even made me thank. I'm going to miss him a lot. That's all I have.
Yes, I'd like to thank Ted for his service and for his coaching. Early on, when I joined the council back in May. So, he's been a good mentor, and will definitely be missed. I would like to say to Joe, welcome. You'll, I like this because now you're the new guy. The hazing is not that bad, but I just wanted to kind of hit it out there. There's a couple of things I do want to say, though. First of all, that dedication we did at Vision Point, the Veterans Point dedication was so well-done, so well-choreographed. Thank you, staff. But I also want to recognize that guy back there, Chris, because every event like this requires, if you don't, and it's so many times, it's just overlooked, but you have to have a good sound system. And they've heard me say this several times in the staff meeting now. He did it. He pulled it off. I watched him putting things together and how he was, it was, everybody could hear us.
His arms were flailing.
I mean, thank you, Chris. Great job. It was awesome. I had a lot of people come up to me, Mayor, asking about how they could get their loved one up on that wall, and explain to them that they could go to a website, on our city website, and they could do that. I'd like to ask the council to consider agendizing an item for a discussion and perhaps an action on actually establishing a policy where they can submit that information, and we'll get it on the wall quickly. And we'll just add them as they come in. And then, every Veterans Day, we'll have a ceremony out there that just recognizes all of the folks that are on the wall. And perhaps we have people reading their names to recognize.
I'll second that.
For consideration of the council. Maybe we can get something on the agenda.
That's a good idea.
Hopefully, we build another wall.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I have.
I personally want to thank the staff for, I know this was, this was an idea that I posed a while back. And everyone worked very hard to see that this project was done. Because as we all know, I think we, veterans in general deserve recognition, and especially our Shenandoah veterans. And everyone, everyone worked very hard to meet the deadline, to make sure that it was completed by Veterans Day. And it wasn't easy. And I know it took a lot of effort. And thank to our contractors, Joseph, your liaison with them, in making sure that this, that these things happened in a timely manner. Landology and the designers of that memorial just did a fantastic job at meeting the deadlines. I want to thank Kirby also. I know she was, she's new to the position. She was put right into the, into the fire with a lot of responsibility and a lot of things to do. And she did a great job.
She really did.
Very, very proud of that young lady. Again, thank you. My dream is fulfilled. Thank you. Thank you for putting up with me, especially you, Joseph, for bugging you all the time to make sure that this was done and when it was done. And thank you, thanks to all those veterans who contributed to this, to this effort, especially with the approval of the, of the design and the items that they sent in, with all the data that they sent in on themselves. And we're not done with that memorial. We're going to keep on working on it. We're going to keep adding. Hopefully, we'll get some static displays out there sometime, hopefully soon. But again, thanks to everyone. My personal heartfelt thank yous to all. All right. Okay, we have no executive session planned for tonight. So, we're going to adjourn this meeting at seven thirteen. I got the time right.